I put up my trees, I can't see.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today's Tuesday, June 3rd, 7 o'clock PM. Can we begin with the pledge of allegiance, please?
Good evening, United States of America, and to the Father, to the Son, to the Holy Nation, under God, in this world, with liberty, justice, and
Any public comments? My folks are here in solidarity with Matt Troy. Outstanding correspondence?
None.
Okay. The minutes, I would accept a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes from May 20th, 2025.
So move, second.
Any discussion? I think we were all here. See, now I'll try and mind all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries ahead. Okay, I'm gonna forego the report because we might have a long presentation and a couple of things to discuss. So with that, I'll get to new business. Tonight, we have Matt Troy from the Bethel Fire Department. We've been speaking for some time about the possibility of doing a fire training, I'd say, operation out at the Paul Street area, right behind the old wastewater treatment plant. So with that, Matt, I'll turn it over to you. Is she getting some of them on top for you? Right.
Where starts this stand?
There's cameras everywhere, you can see it anywhere you want.
I can see this one, so it don't sound.
Okay. Okay, great. Good evening, thank you so much. As Dan mentioned, I'm Matt Troy. I moved here down in 2020 with my wife, and I joined the fire department right away. In fact, it's one of the reasons we picked up. She wanted a town with a train station, and I wanted a town that saw an active volunteer fire department. When I joined here, I started as a volunteer firefighter in my hometown in Hebron, so I joined in 2004. So I had 21 years' experience as a volunteer firefighter, and when I joined here, I was very excited about how active this department is. And you might remember from a few years ago, behind the South Street Firehouse, we were using an old construction trailer as our training facility. They were running firefighter one classes in there, we were doing Monday night drills in there. That trailer was pretty tired. It was falling apart, had some black mold issues and stuff. And I've been thinking ever since I joined here about how much I think this town deserves and would benefit from a dedicated fire training facility. I know land and space is a premium, so this was something that I started thinking about back in October of 2022. And over some time, talking with Dan Carter and other members of the fire departments, I put together this proposal this evening for your recommendation and guidance and hopefully support of adopting 14 Paul Street into a space for our first responders to use. So Mary, if you wanna scroll down, I don't know if we're... You have it in a printout in front of me as well, it's in black and white, this is.
Go to the three bars, was there a full screen option?
I'm not a Google Meet person, so I don't know how to help you here. Okay. Great, you can scroll down. So in your pack in front of you, this is something that you can also take. We don't have to read this word for word. I didn't know if this would be something that would get presented to you in person, or if it's something that would just be dropped off. But it starts off with a letter of proposal that just kind of introduces the project recommendation. You can see if we go up, so okay, so that second paragraph. One thing that I specifically cite is the outside audit that was performed on the fire departments. One of the recommendations on page 104 of that audit conclusion was a recommendation to establish funding to construct a training tower, quote, citing the ability to provide training is not only necessary but also required by ISO requirements. You know, we, up until this point, you'll see a slide that talks about what we do for training here in town so far. We've been using our pre-existing facilities and our fire department building, our parking lots. And it really kind of opens up us to some risk and liability with that, as well as limits us in the training that we're able to do. So that was one of the recommendations that was given to us from that presentation. Additionally, I go on, just kind of summarizing stuff in that first letter. We can scroll down a little bit further and pick up some stuff, I think. I do say at the end here that this proposal simply starts by asking the Board of Selectmen officially to designate 14 Paul Street property as the double fire, I'm sorry, double first responder training grounds, so that we may begin work to clear the site, evaluate its condition, and begin acting on the vision of this proposal within the guideline set forth by local, federal ordinances. I honestly don't know what the next steps are, and that's why I'm also here looking for your guidance, to see what has to happen next if we are able to move forward with this. If you can go to the next slide, please. And you can really just look at it, the image is here. If you've been to either Stony Hill or the South Street Firehouses, you've seen that we perform training out in our back parking lot. We had that construction trailer. Currently, that has gone away, that was a process, but I was able to find someone that actually took it off of our hands. And we've replaced it with a 20-foot shipping container. Inside that, we've built a small maze. We performed some firefighter down and certain rescue training in that last fall. On top of it, we're in the process of building a roof ventilation prop, thanks to the generosity of Rings End, which has helped us in getting the lumber to build that. We've done vehicle extrications out back. Stony Hill is featured down here in the bottom left, they've built mazes out of pallets and stuff. This is all beneficial training. As you know, we meet every Monday night for weekly training, and then we do additional training. We have members here that teach firefighter one and firefighter two classes. Just this past weekend, the Connecticut Fire Academy is here hosting a pump operator class, so we're really trying to promote training in this community, but we're limited. We can't, we can't actually train inside our buildings beyond the apparatus space, because in terms of the clean gear and the clean firehouse initiative, we should not be taking our dirty gear into the clean spaces of our firehouse. When we're out in the parking lot, we're dragging our gear on asphalt, which isn't great for the longevity of our gear. When we clean up our car accident training and stuff, you know, we do our best to sweep it up, but there's glass, metal shards and stuff. I don't know if anyone is experiencing pop tires or anything, but it's definitely something that's there. As a concern, Stony Hill, Doug, do you still have those cars in the backyard parking lot right now?
Yeah, we quit.
Okay, but for a while, you know, Stony Hill was doing some extrication training and stuff. It's not a secure fenced-in area. At night, we don't know if anybody makes their way in and potentially starts playing around with that stuff. So, you know, these are some of the limitations that we have in our current training. Additionally, not pictured here, when we do our live burn training, or we do anything that is required for NFPA on a larger scale, we are driving out of town a significant amount of time and distance. We're either going to Fairfield, Thomaston, or New Haven to do our training, which is taking apparatus, personnel, and time away from this community, which is tough, and it'd be nice if we had an opportunity to stay a little bit closer. It also makes us response ready. So if training, and when the call comes in, we're able to respond right away. Greenwood Avenue, the fire that happened back in December of 23, 22, 23, we actually had a large amount of our department that was down in New Haven training before a live burn. So, you know, we had limited staffing to begin, and so we got started. We go to the next slide, please. This is something you can read on your own, it's not gonna show up while I'm here. You have it in front of you, it's a SWOT analysis, so you can kind of look at some of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats that I kind of put together on this. Some of the guys here are snickering because we learned how to do this in our instructor two class, so I kind of took what I learned in that class and applied it to here. We can just move on, you can read that on your own time. I have here a proposed timeline for what would be great if we're able to acquire this property. This is not something that's gonna happen overnight. What we're really looking for is the opportunity to designate this as a first responder training grounds, and then we can start putting in the sweat equity, we start budgeting, we start figuring out what happens next. But if we have space and we can start using, it's the membership that's really gonna make this into what it is. So I have here, you know, just in his first year, basically, T and B year, it's really just about cleaning up the property. Poison ivy mitigation, cleaning up some brush, just seeing what's even there, so that we can figure out what the next steps are. And then going beyond, you'll see some proposals I have for training building ideas and such. That's something that definitely is, you know, a few years down the road. We can continue on. Next, I have just some of the GIS mapping to help you get a better idea of what the property is. As Dan mentioned, this is the backside of the pump station. So 14 Paul Street, it's actually, the access comes in here at the pump station, which is through a gate, a locked gate. But once we move into the property, there's 2.28 acres that's there. Per ISO, you get benefits, you get ISO points for having a two-acre training grounds that's fully fenced in. So we have enough land there. There are some challenges potentially in a little bit of dual use of the property, which I could defer to Dan to speak about, I don't know if it's appropriate at this moment, but we have the space there that's already relatively fenced in, and it's just about turning that space into what we need it and want it to be. The next few slides are just some satellite imagery that shows the history of the space. This is the current image. You can see it's pretty overgrown, which I think is actually very interesting. If you go to the next slide, you'll see four images that actually historically show how much the space is overgrown in the last 11 years, or sorry, nine years. Going back to 2016, you can actually see quite a bit. It is probably a winter image as well, but we have the two pits that are visible there, we have less overgrowth, and then as we move forward, it kind of just turns into Jurassic Park. So, you know, there's gonna be some work that's necessary to make it the space that we would like it to be, but I think everyone here showed up, everyone here is ready to put in the board. Of course, you know, this is asking for specific land use requests, so we would have to work with all the proper departments. Talk to the wetlands, there is a body of water that runs adjacent to the train tracks there. It is within the floodplain, we would have to make sure that we're following everything so that protects the property, but also protects the surrounding environment. So happy to work with all the departments. It's a learning process for me, but it's something that we would do to do it the right way. We can go on to that slide. These are just some images of site visit that I was able to do with Dan, just to kind of explore the space. There's already a considerable amount clearing that's there. There's grassy fields that have been mowed, there's kind of a gravel pad there, there's a few pre-existing structures that are in various stages of stability. We would have to assess all of that. I'm not looking to go in and go scorched earth and destroy everything. I actually believe that this is from a sustainability effort, a great opportunity to use things that are already there, recycle, and give me life to them. We can go on to the next slide. Next, I have just a list of, just some, this is where I start dreaming. Things that I would love to see in this space and what we could do with it. If you've been to any regional training school or any of the surrounding towns that have training grounds, there's a lot of different things that we have to be prepared for, and we have the opportunity, if we have the space, to start building a lot of those training devices and infrastructure. A Class A burn building, that's a container building, so using shipping containers, going kind of a more ad hoc route, but it's something that's very common and acceptable per NFPA for us to do, as long as we follow their rules and regulations. A vehicle extrication pad, so that we can be cutting up cars and not worry about leaving glass and stuff where people might be driving. A training tower, I have a slide on that that I think is kind of interesting. I have a real dream, I don't think it's, I don't, I don't know what the reality of it is, but I read that MTA is going to be retiring a bunch of their old passenger railroad cars, and I would love for us to get one or two train cars donated, so that we could be prepared for train derailments and incidents that run into that. I think that would be a very cool opportunity, so we have to look into that. Here, we have a proposed site layout. I've got all different types of toys. We're basically trying to make a a comprehensive training facility that gives us the opportunity to run the classes that we want, run the drills that we need to be better firefighters and better providers to this community. We can continue on. The next slide is actually a design, this is what started it all. I designed this in a CAD-type program back in October of 2022. This was originally an idea of, oh man, maybe we could do this behind the building in place of that construction trailer. And it was just really me kind of dreaming and playing and doing a little bit of research. And it has since evolved. We have, like I said, that 20-foot container. We don't have anything else to work with at the moment, but this is born out of ideas from other training schools that I've visited and taken part in training at. We go to the next slide. The current training prop isn't the design that I had, this is kind of what we're trying to do with the 20-foot container that's behind the building right now. And you can see that there's a variety of little things that we add on to this to probably make training more realistic, so we can be better prepared to serve this community. We can continue on. Then I started really dreaming, and I had my, you know, not only my time for some reason for the last few months, so I started putting together an idea of what a training building could look like on this property with a little bit more space. And again, it's made out of shipping containers, whether they're new or they're used, we find the ways that's best for us to to be able to afford this, we could build on to it over time. But again, it's built out of recommendations and inspiration that came from other training schools that I've visited. We can continue on. These are just different images and slides, what I was kind of looking at. Right now, we don't have the opportunity to do bailout training, something that is, should be a basic training skill that we would do in the fire service, which is preparing for firefighters in the worst-case scenario to jump out of a window. We don't, we don't have that. If you wanted to do that, we would have to hire an outside service to come, rent a trailer for us, do that training. It limits us to making sure that everyone is there on that same day. You know, this is something that we could build into our training here, and again, not only is it helping us prepare to serve the community, it's also helping our firefighters prepare to serve and protect themselves. There are two aeration pits. I didn't, I would not have known that that was an aeration pit, but talking with gentlemen from the water department, they explained some of this to us. And they're filled with rainwater at the moment. There's a lot of work that would have to be done. And we have to figure out what is the appropriate mitigation process for using this, or disposing of it, or whatever. I had a very interesting conversation with one of our members who works in construction and site work, and he actually recommended that this could be something that we could talk to the town engineer to see, maybe these pits are a great foundation for putting a building on top of with the appropriate fill and everything that goes in. That is outside of my wheelhouse, I will defer to the experts and those that know what they're talking about. But this is an opportunity, I think. It's not necessarily something that's a problem, it could be something that we could use to our advantage and build off of. So we have to do some more research on that. The next slide is actually from a company called Affordable Drill Towers. They're based in Texas. These are pretty cool structures that are NFPA compliant. They also meet most building codes, depending on where you're building. This was the alternative or recommendation for some departments that have lower budgets to still build training towers. So we have two aerial pieces in town. I'm not stacking five shipping containers on top of each other, but, you know, down the road, this is something that we could maybe budget for, or actually start writing grants for, so we could do some actual elevated training to the third or fourth story of a structure. They're pretty cool. The neat thing about this is, these are less than $100,000 to build, and they also can be disassembled and moved if they have to. So if 14 Paul Street suddenly becomes an active pump station again, and we have to move, we call these guys, they disassemble it, we figure out where we go next, I guess, but just again, looking for some ideas. Then the last few slides that we have here are actually images from other towns in Connecticut that have training facilities. And I think some of them are kind of comparable to what we are as a community in size, both population and call volume. Glassberry, Connecticut, has a dedicated training building. They have an actual structure that was built for them to do their Class A burns. But you can see they have a pavilion there, which was an Eagle Scout project donated to them, so it's up to you to get the community involved. We go to the next slide. This is Colechester, Connecticut. I grew up in Hebron, which is directly adjacent to Colechester. What we did here was when Colechester wanted to build this facility, they actually went to all their mutually towns and also wanted to train there and asked them to contribute towards buying a container. So if you bought a container, you also had access to use the facility, as long as you follow the rules and the limitations that were set for it. Colechester is a town with a population of about 17,000, smaller than Bethel, with a similar call volume, except that Colechester has a career department, and we're still doing this with volunteers, so. Yeah. The next one is a much larger facility, this is Eastern Connecticut Regional Training Facility, which is in Willamette, Connecticut. You can see they have a rail prop, which is kind of cool. There is a propane fire prop, which the fire two class, it's been rented from Eastern, but there are other fire schools that you get it from, Virville, Witchville, yeah. You know, so these are just ideas to add to our wish list down the road, and we can continue on with that. Additionally, I don't want to refer to this as a firefighter training facility, I want to call this a multi-agency type of facility, first responder facility. Speaking with some other PD members, they have their indoor gun range, but having the opportunity to practice, you know, tactics or whatever outside, away from the public, this would be a space that they could use, accident reconstruction, they could use this space. Public works, or members of the municipal center, if you need to do annual fire extinguisher training or something, this is where we could do that, where it's away from general public, away from residential areas. I think this is a space that we use by lots of people in town, and not just the fire departments. So in conclusion, there's 28 pages for you to chew on. I appreciate your time and consideration. I appreciate Dan Carter for helping me over the last two years. Keep an eye out for places. We kind of were looking at lots of different properties to see what was available, and I think this is actually a really cool opportunity. So I defer to you, I don't know what the next steps are, I'm happy to answer any of your questions. Thanks, David. You know, gallery.
Let's you guys go first.
I'm definitely not opposed to it. I think it would be a good idea to take training out of the backyard parking lot. So included area. I don't know if you're gonna get me to buy into training towers and some of the stuff that you've proposed, but if you're talking about, you know, putting some containers together, and, you know, having an area to cut up cars, you know, something like that, I think that, you know, that's a reasonable request, as long as, you know, we remember that, remember that, you know. I may have a little bit of expertise in building, and some of the stuff you're talking about is a big deal than you think. And a lot of it's gonna depend on the building department, so I think you guys talked this on, I imagine. The health department would want to get involved, so there is a lot of hurdles to get through. Now, Melanie would know better than I do, some being to town, there's probably more leeway than if it was another company coming in, but in theory, I think it's a good idea, as long as you guys remember to be reasonable about it. If you understand what I'm saying, if you get some containers, you get a place to do, I don't know if you're talking about doing small live burns, or you fill them with smoke, or whatever, again, I think taking it out of your parking lot and away from a residential area is a good idea. But I don't want to hear from you a few years from now saying, why aren't you building me a seven-story place that I could rappel off of? You know, I'm saying, so, you know, you would have my support, so, you know, giving you a new place to train. Because I think some of it's easy, putting a pad in to cut up cars, not a big deal. Containers, you could probably get a lot of people to donate the containers that you need, you know, especially talking about Paul Street and stuff like that, you probably get some help, so. As long as legally, we're allowed to do it, which is why Miss O'Brien is here.
We got a few steps to advance before we get there.
That's, that's, that's the stick in the spokes of this, she'll tell us what we can and can't do, but I'm definitely not opposed to it.
And I'm also in support of it, but also on a lower key scenario, you know, originally, we were talking about the space, and I had mentioned to Dan also that I have to be able, an adult, one day looked across the street, and I thought that would be a great place for that, for the training center. Just to keep it on a low key, Danbury has just built this, or in the process of finishing the building. I don't know the stage of it, I see the building's up, so, you know, if you needed the more advanced training, that, you know, you could still outsource some of those services, but again, as Brian had just mentioned, if we can keep it low-key for time being, and, you know, see what a budget number is going to be for some of these things in the future, I think it's a great place that you have your own training center. But on the, on the more technical, maybe do the outsourcing.
Yeah, may I respond to that? Sure. I, if, when you look at the SWOT analysis, I absolutely put that in there. Everyone knows that Danbury broke ground through their new training grounds that spun it through, I think, Arba Fund, Arba Fund, or some type of grant. And it's definitely, it's definitely a resource that is, it's just equivalent to what we've been going to in Fairfield, New Haven, Virville. So it's definitely closer, which is great. I don't know if they're gonna be charging, like outside, every time we go to a burn, we spend about $800 to $1,000 per burn. And absolutely, I'm not looking to do a crazy burn building that is going to be multi-story, so we can do basement burns and stuff. That would be a great opportunity to go to Danbury, but also, I don't think we're gonna be going to Danbury every Monday night either.
Oh, no. So this property would be ideal for your intermediate training, or what you want to call it, however you call it, or, you know, your phases of different training, you know, so. I'm in support of it.
So obviously, we've talked about this for a while, and, yeah, my, my one question is to fitting this into Danbury and how that goes long-term, which I know that will evolve. I'll give you just a very quick story why this has been important, because I was on the Redding Fire Department doing fire one for a while, and I had to, had to leave, so I had family stuff going on, but I had a chance to go in the Boys and Girls Club down there before it was taken out and do the smoke thing, and be the guy that fell down, and, you know, they had to drag me out, the whole works. And I really, really enjoyed it, and what was interesting was, just like here, having something that's real-world training during the week is important. I think it's important for your recruiting effort, that people have somewhere you can go do real training, just on an average Monday or Thursday night, whatever you've got going on. So this idea has been in the making for a long time, as you said, we're just looking for a place. I mean, I think the one thing that both the other selectmen said that we just want to be cautious about is we don't want to outdo Danbury, we want to make sure that this, and listen, who knows what it'll be down the line, because they could raise the price, but what I love about your proposal and where this is going with everybody here, you know, it's one thing if we go as a town and say, okay, we're gonna clear the property and do this and that, and that's a lot of money. The thing that you guys have is time, and if we're able to work together and it works, because you have a lot of steps to go through, but if it's something that, like, can be done over time, little by little, and that is a good thing for all of us, because that property is just sitting there wasting. And the other thing we talked about putting out there was an invessel for our organics, basically something for compost, because we don't have a place to put that yet, but that would work very well next door. So, yeah, I'm, for the beginning, I've been very supportive of the idea. As far as your next steps, your next steps really are talking to land use. I had to have the initial conversation with land use, and, you know, the idea of having a non-permanent building is probably better than a permanent building right now. But you'll have to follow all of those rules and see what, what you can do with it, but I'm very supportive of the idea. I think probably next step is to go to land use, have a conversation with them, see what happens. At some point, we'll have to go to P and Z for an 824 review. I was there to let them know what we're planning to do, but we're not quite there yet. Melanie, you want to say something?
I, I think we have to talk about the structure of this and what the relationship is between these towns and the two
Not even there yet.
Fire department corporations, and what we do there, and sometimes there are charter sets, depending on what it is. So we just have to talk about how that structure would be immediately, and make sure we conform with the charter.
Yeah, I agree on that. I mean, I think the next step is, you know, can you do it? And, you know, how does it interfere with metlins and all the other stuff out there? That was when we had the first conversation with B and Z, that was one thing we talked about. It was like, okay, like, what can you do on the property? I'm sure there's something you can, you can do. So it'd be the next step, I think. I don't know that we have to vote on anything yet, but it showed support. Yeah. Well, there's really another table, we, we had a discussion, there's no vote. Let's see, we have, can we either the chiefs here? Doug, any thoughts?
I think it's a great idea to get the stuff out of our parking lots, and we start by, you know, putting the pads down there or something, so we have a place to do extrications. That's the whole idea, it's, it's all thought of in the area down there, it would be excellent. And I think a lot of that cleaning up of that property there, isn't gonna be a coming to you guys and asking for money, it's gonna be the volunteers here volunteering their time to do a lot of that, and also, I could, you know, not to say I would, I will talk to Mary Danbury about possibly problems, you know, either our chipper or log truck going down there, you know, Log truck going, going down there, you know, and doing a lot of that groundwork. I, I think. He would be in favor of letting me, you know, use a truck on the weekend or whatever. And, and I think it's going to be a cost. You know, it's not going to be a big cost to the town.
Sure.
So, you know.
Right. And the other, the other part to consider too, as you saw in that picture, right now Gatten Brothers or Dayton Brothers are using that other piece. They've been informed that, you know, they're going to have to move off of that at some point because they, they've just been expanding to use our property.
I'm sure I'm not happy about that.
No, it's, it's not a big deal.
Why can't you burn the brush? You're a fire department.
Seriously, it's like, can you do like some brush fire?
Well, I mean, it's draining. I mean, what's the big deal?
Yeah.
I don't get it. I don't.
Chief McAllister, did you have anyone to add?
I would like to start with just the fact that we were going to use the Stonehill Firehouse for a burn building. So. Now we don't have to do that.
Way to build bridges.
I was at the Danbury Plaza this afternoon in the meeting for hours and, uh, that new proposed building area, uh, is about. About ninety percent completed. Uh, access to that in the first couple of years, I don't think is going to be as good as we would have liked. Um, because of the cost of, as Matt said earlier, that was an art project. And the site preparation and the building were sort of expensive. It came to be just under a million dollars for that. They could get the old building for support type of activities, but I, I could tell you that the bulk of their training area will. Be limited to the Danbury volunteers and David paid for it for you. And I think we'll be able to get in there, but, uh, I think it's just until Chief Everduska is. David Everduska, I got the building today from the Virgo Fire School from the gas. Now this stuff just keeps. Um, we, we go out of town and cost a lot of money.
But chief, again, I just, I just want to reiterate. You'll have my support if we keep this small and local, right? Get your trailers on there, get your pad to extricate vehicles, you know. I don't really want to see Paul Street turn into like a regional fire school where everyone from the state is coming down and using our facility. I think it's a good place for our fire department to grow and train. But again, I, I'm, I, I just want everyone to know where I'm coming from because you guys know I'm pretty upfront. Small and suit the needs of the Bethel Fire Department. If you need that advanced training. With ropes and stuff like that. Spend the money to go to school that has a ropes course or whatever, right? This is a great place for you guys, like I said, to do your control burns, do search and rescue training, however you guys do that. Work with the police department and some things they could probably do semunitions and stuff down there in an open. Area where they're not going to hurt anybody, but you know, you're going to have my support. Until we get carried away. I'm just being very straight. Okay?
I'll be straight with you too. I thought you were going to fit on this fresh.
This is, this is outside of terms and insults.
I would just like to say, and Matt did a great job breaking this up. This is going to be a cooperative effort along with the police department. Now, we only have to read the paper. And of course, that call new Thomas after number one. I don't know if you got involved with that, but you know, that was a, uh, situation there where this type of facility would have enhanced your ability to train. For a situation where there's a hostage situation took place today. And, uh, and in addition to that, it always took place at the ball water. So with just the techniques that you develop don't have to be in a big facility. But if you're in a small facility like this and, uh, you know, be very proactive with your training and. And obviously coming up with some very positive results. So I don't want you to think this is just a fire department operation. This is going to be a police operation and there's EMS that we never even mentioned tonight. Going down here and do a lot of EMS related things is also on the table. So I thank you, uh, Selector for the, the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
That's funny. Well, thank you.
Guys, I'll ask you.
Yeah.
You're more than welcome to stay. We've never had this many people.
I know.
Tell to you guys that you want to stay.
You should have worked, there's more people to come in at town meetings. Okay, um. All right. So next up, consideration of, uh. Converting an existing police vehicle to a K nine vehicle or purchasing a new K nine vehicle. So if you take a look, we have, um, a couple of things before us at C one. We have minutes from the special meeting of Bethel Police Commission where they're advocating a new. K nine vehicle replaced in two thousand seventeen. Um, and then with some money cut from the budget at some point. So I guess we're looking to that restored. And then we also have, uh, at C two, we have a few quotes. Um, on what it would take to consider, uh, just replacing the innards of a two thousand and twenty-two vehicle. With the K nine and then, you know, the idea would be a K nine vehicle is not on the road near as much. As a regular patrol vehicle. So you're somehow extending the lifespan of this two thousand and twenty-two. Um, if you see the, I'll just kind of go through you. You see the front page, ninety-nine is the, uh. I'll mention this right here again. Ninety-nine is the current vehicle. I got that right lieutenant? It's the current K nine vehicle is ninety-nine.
Yeah, here I actually clarified this for all intents purposes.
I'll send it. Thank you. Oh, that's right. Ninety-nine seventies, two thousand seventeen. Um.
Cause I was, I was reading the first part. Kind of just gives out the numbers.
Oh, oh, it's a ninety-seven Ford Explorer.
It's a two thousand seventeen. I'm sorry.
That's what I thought. Okay.
I just give a thought.
Sure.
For this.
Support.
So if, if it was me.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just speaking from my perspective. I'm not trying to. How to run a police department, obviously. But you only have thirty-one thousand nine hundred ninety-eight miles on the twenty twenty-two. Why wouldn't you take one of the new vehicles that are coming in that are approved in the budget? Install your K nine equipment in that because you don't want to keep pulling that out and moving it around. And get another year out of a two thousand and twenty-two cruiser. That only has thirty-one thousand miles. That's not a lot of miles for a police cruiser for patrol purposes, right? So, you know, do the K nine, just take one of those cars that you're buying that were approved for July. Put your outfit that for the K nine. So that car is going to last a real long time due to the lack of driving that you already said. Get another year out of the twenty twenty-two for patrol purposes. And that would be my suggestion. I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense. And that way the K nine's all set. You get a. Brand new cage in the K nine. You put it in a new cruiser. Obviously the K nine car is going to last a lot longer than a patrol vehicle because only one officer is driving it. And, and I think it saves us money in the long run, not having to keep switching. The cages around. Right. So that would be my, I mean, I would support that.
How's the issue with the fleet? Because that's the, I'm trying to figure out at this point. What's in next year's budget? What is in this year? So they've done all the purchases this year, right? Of cars?
Not yet.
They haven't.
Definitely. They're waiting for July first.
Oh, for, but for the next budget.
For the new budget.
But you already bought the budget for this year.
Yeah.
Okay.
So yes, we are completed. I believe we purchased three vehicles last year.
Right.
Um, so what, what I was explained to me was that, um, car ninety-nine, obviously you can see it has a hundred and. Three thousand miles on it. We put a lot of work into it. It keeps breaking down. Um. And it was, it also explained to me that we were looking at the lowest, uh, mileage in the Ford. Which is, we can say the, the newest Ford for us. It would be, uh, car one oh nine, just two thousand twenty-two. Um, we did the estimate on that with specialty and they explained to us that it's going to cost. We, we can't use any of the equipment in there because in fact, the matter is car ninety-nine is. Of, you know, eight years old. So there's no warranty on it. We couldn't convert. Any of that equipment. So we had to purchase all new equipment for that vehicle, car one oh nine. Um, so. The chief had put together, you know, obviously some pricings on the Tahos and the, and the Fords, um, to show. You know, what the difference in prices would be as well as, you know, yes. Obviously taking some of the equipment. From car one oh nine, we can put that into a newer vehicle. Uh, that would. Cost save us money in regards to that because, you know, it'd be twenty-three thousand dollars, uh, as opposed to the new equipment. You put it in a newer vehicle. I believe it's thirty-three five. Um, I just wanted to put all these numbers in there for you guys to, you know. What you're doing and.
Yeah.
Understand.
Uh, so the up to upset of Tahoe.
Tahoe and a Ford would be thirty-three five, brand new.
But you already have the Tahoe on the budget. So it's really just putting the K nine cage in, in the.
Oh, the, the thirty-three has already been approved for the upfitting of the new vehicle. So how much does it cost to put a K nine cage in an, in a new Tahoe? Cause again. Just me thinking, if you're going to continue purchasing Tahos. Down the road, wouldn't it make sense to buy? A cage that fits the Tahoe and use one of your new Tahos? Cause are you purchasing three Tahos or are they Fords? Are you going back to Fords?
No, no, yeah.
I believe.
Yeah, I've talked, I've talked to the chief about this. Right now the Ford Explorer would be less than Tahos. So they may be going back to Ford Explorer because of the.
I mean, I'm, I'm not going to micromanage it. If you want my support to throw it in the car with thirty-one thousand, I'll give you my support today. I'm just thinking outside the box saying if it was me, I would take the K nine car, one of the new cars you're buying.
Yeah.
And outfit that into a K nine and get one more year out of the Ford.
I think the issues are getting one less car.
I, that's exactly what I was just going to go at this. So, so I believe there's two in the budget. Correct. There's two in the budget that were allocated. So.
I get it. But a twenty-two year old car with thirty-one thousand miles is no big deal to drive and patrol. And I know that for a fact. I mean, I did have twenty-seven years of experience in it. Okay. And a lot of our cars been kept for five years.
Sure.
Okay. Because you could get more than, you know, thirty-two thousand on a car. That car is not ready. To trade in with thirty-two thousand miles.
I don't think they meant to trade it in.
Well, whatever. I, I haven't seen the list of what you're trading in.
Yeah.
But I don't think we're putting the police department, and I would never put our police department in dire straits. You know, I have a tremendous amount of respect. For the profession by saying. Let's just do the twenty twenty-two then. And, you know, in July, August, if, you know, January, whenever it is, if it really becomes a problem, it's not hard to approve it then because it really became an issue.
But look, you, you guys, there's two of you, there's one of me. I mean, whatever.
No, no, I mean. So what is the issue? What is the issue with getting? Well, I, I know the problem was getting a car too right now.
Yeah. So the, I think the two. Vehicles that are allocated for the two thousand twenty-six, right? We, we don't want to lose one of them, right? So, so if we take that and we, we convert it into a K nine car. We're taking away from our fleet, right? So that we replace certain cars. When they get to a certain timeframe, you know, mileages, hours, things, all these things are, and you know this, right? So, and. Like even today, for instance, you know, every car was out. And, and this is our season, right? Because we're out there extra duty wise, which makes the town money. You know, because we, we obviously have that, that money allocated for, you know, uh. The general fund and what have you, but it's, when you take away from the fleet, then, then we're. We're not taking away from the officers, right? So it. I understand that we're trying to save the town money as well, but. It's, it's just better off that we go with a newer vehicle, you know, with the K nine car and, you know. The K nine car that's being replaced, that officer drives twenty-seven miles from home, twenty-seven miles back when he comes back. So if we did it with an older car with that has thirty-one thousand miles on it. Within a year span, he's going to be close to a hundred thousand miles and we're going to be back in the same spot. And then we've also taken away from our fleet because we're not replacing car one oh nine. See?
Yeah, that's, that's seventy, that's seventy thousand on one year. So whether you, whether you use an old vehicle or a new vehicle, you're going to put seventy thousand miles on it, right? I mean, if, if we're going to take thirty-one thousand to a hundred, hundred thousand, I mean, that's. That's seventy thousand miles.
Probably going to put on at least thirty-five a year. I would say that's the best time. Now, this is where he could be going on calls and things of that nature outside of, uh, his regular duties.
I understand. I get it. The K nine guys all take their cars home. I understand because you might have to respond from home to wherever it is. I understand. I'm not questioning that.
No.
So, so one of the issues I was hearing was it was a problem getting one of the cars now. Like there's one now, but if you wait into July.
That's what the examiner explains to us that they're holding, uh, for at this moment in time, which obviously will. Now the cost savings on that, I believe is.
Yeah.
Six.
So the question is like, how long can they hold? Can they hold it till July first?
You know, to, to Brian's point is to take the new car, put the, the K nine equipment in it, then it's fifty-nine thousand. Versus sixty-nine thousand. Let them keep the other twenty-two as a patrol car.
We're saying it's fifty-five thousand update to, to put it into the new car?
No.
What would it cost to put it into? Or you don't know, but.
No, look, to put it into a brand new car, it's thirty, thirty-three because you need brand new equipment because it would be a two thousand and twenty-five.
But that's everything.
But how much of that's already been budgeted? See what I'm saying? Because you already budgeted for the light bar, for the radio, for the strobes, so the, well, would be, is it a different case with the K nine? I'm assuming it is, right? It's probably bill. It's not like, yeah, it, it's probably got extra stuff, so. You know. I, I mean, look, if, if it was saving ten thousand, you know, between a new car, I guess my point is, is I would like to see us. Not buy an additional cruiser this year. I mean, we set a budget and I understand the needs. If we can make it work in the two thousand twenty-two and we're not putting in the officer in any. Danger driving the vehicle, which we're not, that would be my preference. Just, you know, put it into twenty twenty-two. And hopefully next year we're not facing. You know, what we faced this last budget season, which was unprecedented increases in insurance and whatnot. And. You know, we'll maintain the police fleet as, you know, we always want to. But again, you know, you guys have, have, have your say as well. This one first.
What's the expectation of the cost of the new car next year?
I don't have that.
Yeah.
Well, they wouldn't know because Ford hasn't come out.
Yeah, that comes out later.
Even last year.
No, I know. I mean, but the problem is if it's not in their budget now. We have to go to the board of finance for capital not recurring now. And that's not, sounds like not doable. So, um. So really there are two choices or you just, you go, you go put it in the car you have. Or you get, you put it in the car that you get hopefully in July. Cause you like, you guys get two cars next year, right? In the budget. Yeah. Um.
Well, what would you would prefer seeing it go in the twenty twenty-two?
Correct. I would like it in a new car.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's take the new car off the table, like an extra new car. You have two new cars coming in.
Yeah.
Or you have the twenty twenty-two or, you know, Mr. Rovino, if you want to speak, so you're under the police commission.
Well, that's. Yeah, they did improve. We go for new cars.
Okay.
Police commission asked about getting a new car this year.
Right. I understand. I read, I read, I read the thing. So what I'm saying is if you had your choice. Would you put it in the twenty twenty-two or would you take one of the new cars and outfit that? I mean, I always put out the spot. I walked into this, you know, and I made it was, which is fine. You know, that's what I'm here for. But, you know, I mean. I, I guess to me, I mean, it sounds like the twenty twenty-two just makes sense on, you know, and then.
Well, then you're down.
We're not down a cruiser, right? Because you're going to get two new cars.
Next year. You're down on this year for patrolman. And you replace it with two next year versus taking.
But we're talking about twenty-eight days, not even twenty-four days.
No, the, the understanding is if, if they don't get the one that they're holding on to, that probably won't be ready to explore.
But there's no, there's no way we can just, I mean, can't we just use money from, uh, our surplus and refund that money come July? I mean, what's the difference? We just take the money out of our surplus and then take that money, get them the next, the car tomorrow. What's the difference? We're going to buy it in twenty-six days. I mean, is there any law against us using? Our town surplus and then taking the money that was marked for one of those cruisers and putting it back.
Well, we, my understanding is we'd have to find out. We'd have to talk to Brad about where that, what a surplus is because you can only move so many things around. And we don't know if there's surplus in your budget.
Right.
We don't know.
I'm not talking about the surplus of this budget. I'm talking about our town surplus. I mean.
They would probably take a vote, vote of the board of finance to.
Or, or we.
Take it from.
Yeah, or, or we could take it, you know, with border finance, take it from that capital non-recurring and put the money back into capital non-recurring.
Mm-hmm.
In July, when we see where, I mean, the town's definitely going to have. Fifty-five thousand left over, you know, from this budget that we can put back into capital non-recurring.
Boy, yeah.
Without, without a doubt. Yeah. And that way.
We've had, yeah.
That way, if this car is imperative to get before July first, then let's just do it. We'll get, we'll buy the car as long as we're legally allowed to. I don't see what the big deal is. Make a phone call tomorrow. Say. You know, Brad says in the morning, yeah, do it. You can call. I don't know where you guys northwest.
Yes, yes.
Northwest Hills or something like that. Yeah. Northwest Hills or something like that, yeah, so.
Okay.
You can tell, we'll take, we'll take the car.
So, um, we have a chair of the board of finance here, he's kind of mounting, there's an understanding, I think we'll replenish that.
I would support that, of course.
Yeah, okay.
It's the same, spending the same amount of money.
Right.
And I'm sorry, is there a savings of six thousand for this?
For the Ford's.
For this Ford.
Yeah, we can get it.
The Ford's are in there, in in stock right now.
Yeah.
And you're thinking of switching back to the Ford's.
Yeah, yeah. So so again, so with respect to the uh.
But is the equipment from the Tahoe fit in the Ford?
No, we have to get all new, so that's why it's high, it's thirty-three bucks. Man, if you can tell them why the thirty-three five, it's radios, console.
Yeah.
It it's just a doggy.
But but the, what I'm trying to say is, the practice of flip-flopping cruisers to save six thousand doesn't necessarily save you six thousand if you have to buy a new Havas, you have to buy new page, you have to buy all that, so, you know, it kind of makes sense to pick a cruiser, right? And kind of stick with that cruiser, so you're not constantly
Yeah.
changing equipment, because, you know, equipment costs are. I don't know.
So what I'm reading is, is to replace car ninety-nine, is what this would be.
Right.
And you would replace it with a twenty twenty-five Ford Explorer with all, everything for the K nine, okay, right? Seventy-nine five, that's what I'm looking at, all in.
Yes.
Okay.
So so my point is this, make, make the twenty twenty-two the K nine vehicle for now, and buy him the new patrol car right away and get reimbursed for that, so they're not down in their fleet.
Well, then you got to have the equipment in the end of twenty-two. What equipment are you going to put in?
Then you have to spend a thirteen-five to upgrade the twenty-two.
So why do, why do we have to upgrade the twenty-two? It's thirteen-five, so, yeah, we'll add that, but that's coming out of capital non-recurring for this budget. I'm not saying replenish that.
I don't think what the decision.
I'm saying to replenish, may maybe I'm just speaking, like, take the thirteen thousand five hundred, buy the cage with capital non-recurring. Also, tell the PD to buy this new car so you don't lose it and have to wait till October. That's the money we'll put back into capital non-recurring after July. Because they can't buy the car right now without us saying, we'll give you the money because their budget's not good until July.
I think Matt was saying that he wanted the dog to be in a new car.
Get a new car.
So I don't know, we got back to.
No, no, and I'm not going to speak for Matt. What Matt said was, that would be getting, that would, let 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 me cut it, and Matt, tell me what else. What 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 Matt was saying was, he would prefer three cars.
Oh.
Not, not take a patrol car.
You posed a question again, Brad.
So so what Matt was saying is, he would like three cars, and I'll put Matt on record as saying he wants three cars.
On record, say.
He would, he wants three cars. My suggestion was, let's get by with spending the thirteen thousand five hundred to make twenty twenty-two a K nine vehicle. Then borrow the money, let them purchase it, we'll pay with it from our town funds to get their patrol car in the fleet right away, so they don't lose that patrol car, they're not down a car.
So the K nine.
But the other, but but here's the other thing, and I guess I've, I've actually had issues with this whole thing with outfitting the K nine car, because that stuff's only good for like seventy years or whatever.
Yeah, but that cruise is not going to last more than seventy years.
That's the point. I mean, to get more out of the K nine equipment, might as well stick it in a new car. Might as well, we might as well buy that car now, make it a K nine car, keep driving the twenty-two.
Right.
In the fleet.
Well, wait, has, and again, has that been the K nine car, the twenty twenty-two, that's a patrol car?
That is a patrol car.
Then that's fine, yeah, you don't want to take a K nine car and put that in patrol, that's not fair.
No, no, so, okay, so so here, here we are.
So you don't need the thirteen.
What what I would, yeah, I would do the thirteen.
I'm sorry, they have the money, and I don't remember what the money is for for a patrol car, but they're short the thirteen thousand for the dog equipment.
That's not.
They don't know, they're going to put the dog equipment in the new car that he's getting.
If if we buy the new car, right, buy the new car, it's a patrol car. Whatever they carry for for what the car is, plus the lights and whatever else they put in it, but they don't have the thirteen in their budget, that would be a new ask from C N R, the thirteen.
If if, no, it's more than that, because it's, for the new car, it's not just thirteen to upgrade it for.
Again, in in some of this discussion.
Yeah.
They carried a new K nine car for this budget, that when a car was cut in this last budget that we went through, they cut the K nine car, and they carried twelve thousand with the increase.
Seriously, there's twelve thousand in their budget right now?
No.
No.
That was cut. That car with the K nine was cut out of the budget.
Right.
So what's in their budget right now is two patrol cars with no K nine equipment.
But it has all the lights and new.
Yes, it's a patrol car, exactly. They need thirteen thousand, because all the lights and console and whatever else they put in the car is in this year's budget already. They just don't have the K nine part of it.
Is that incorrect, Matt?
It is incorrect.
I just.
Fine, I'm not.
No, no.
Asking to replace, I was, I was told that I was supposed to present to you what it was going to cost with the conversion kit into one-on-one. I gave you that information, I presented that to you. And now I'm asking you, then I think that's not, I think we're looking short-term, and I think we should be looking long, long-term.
I think.
And in regards to that, what it comes down to is that it's smart enough to be to get a new car for the K nine. I would agree with that.
Yeah, so, so here's, here's where we go with this, okay? The way I understand it, it's replacing car ninety-nine, the two thousand twenty-five Ford Explorer, that number, all in, everything that's K nine, lights and sirens, everything, is seventy-nine five hundred. The issue is going to be that if we buy it now, out of this year's budget, we're going to recommend for capital non-recurring, but with a plan to bring that back at some point into the budget. So next year, you're going to have one car left, because this will be from next year's budget. But.
What I'm trying to say is, I understand that we've put two new patrol cars in for next year. Part of that two new patrol cars was upfitting them. So if the total cost to outfit to a K nine vehicle is thirty-three thousand, right? It's not all from capital non-recurring, because part of it's already in your budget, is what I'm trying to say. We can't say, we 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 can't say that it's seventy-something thousand when it's not, because there's already money in the budget to outfit those new cruisers.
So it's going to be capital non-recurring less.
Whatever, I don't know what the number is, and I don't, it's not fair to ask him out with that, it's not those numbers.
Oh, he'll have to, he'll have to have those.
But we can, yeah, we can approve that tonight, just saying, look, we're going to say not to exceed whatever, but we'll take that off, and that way they can buy the good cruiser.
So here's, here's where I go with this, and obviously, it's, we're saying this on the record, that the idea is that eventually the money's going to come back capital non-recurring from what we have, so, um, what I would do is.
The car portion.
I understand, so let me make the motion, and then we can discuss it.
Wait, wait a minute, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to make a motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so what what I'm saying is, um, I move that we recommend to the board of finance the purchase of a new twenty twenty-five Explorer as a K nine vehicle. Not we see seventy-nine thousand five hundred coming out of capital non-recurring less what the PD currently has in the budget for a K nine vehicle. For a, for a, what they have now.
They took the K nine.
Because, yeah, because I know they were, they had cut a bunch of stuff there, but, okay, so I think that's clear enough, you know where we're going when it comes to the board of finance. You know where we are, right, Lieutenant?
Second.
We got a second, um, does that, did that kind of work with everybody?
Five of that, some problems.
All right, with that, I'll pray your minds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, I know that was, thank you for your patience, I know you're on the hot seat, yeah, yeah, okay.
Woo-hoo. You did a good job, Matt.
All right. Speaking of vehicles, next up, we have consideration of trucks for the highway department. So if you look at uh D one, and then the extra item that we had, yeah, that came from from Brad was the extra one. So we have two quotes before us. One quote is a X L T. I gotta get my glasses on, because I can't see that, save the light. For sixty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-two. Um, the other one uh is down here for sixty-two hundred nine oh nine, point forty-nine. The uh, the issue with that one, the 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 sixty-two nine, oh, no, actually, both of them have a snowplow on them, for seven thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. The uh, the plan is to take the snowplow off, I had that one, and also the A T tires and the S T X appearance package. If we do that, then the base cost of the truck, instead of either one of these, it would be fifty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-four forty-nine dollars. The basics, so those are the two kind of, the three choices we have. Um, the question has been whether or not to add a snowplow. The uh, the current plow, we we, the former highway director said it was a little loose. Maybe we should hold on to it and use it for something else, but getting the plow, um, we've been talking about it, there's really no reason to get a new plow right now. So I would recommend just not putting it on at all. Uh, and the other couple items, we we don't need, so, any, any of these, which you've seen of these two quotes, I mean, I would recommend going the lower one.
Why do we need, again, why wasn't, why wasn't this put in for this real budget?
I mean, so it wasn't because we had a, the 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 car was in particularly bad shape, and we didn't know. We didn't know, I mean, it's leaking all over the place, it's not cosmetic, we were kind of the impression that it was going to be cosmetic fixes, you know, dents and dings and a torn up rear, you know, door. Uh, it says mechanically, it's in really terrible, terrible shape. And, you know, this was a recommendation too, it's like, we weren't planning on it, but Bobby was driving it, he never put that up on his own capital plan, like it was time to get another one. So we have a, we have a highway director, we have a piece of crap truck. It it's really not worth it. I know it's on the capital plan, but it's it's definitely.
I mean, the oil leaks, not repairable, I mean, what what's leaking?
I I think that if you listen to what the highway garage and the public works director.
This is the first I'm hearing about the truck when I walk into a meeting. So I didn't get any information prior to the meeting. If the leak was that bad, I would love to have the 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 mechanic come tell me.
All right, we'll table.
Table.
We'll table. You can go down to the highway garage and.
I'll go down there tomorrow, okay, just for you.
Turn it up.
Motion to. You got Richie, just just vote it, don't table it, vote with Richie. I mean, it's it's just.
I I I agree with you, we come to a meeting and and all of a sudden it's here, you know, it's.
All right. I uh, I move that we tabled consideration of the highway department truck.
Certainly.
Okay, all favor tabled, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up, we're talking about the creation of fire administrative provision under the emergency management department, this is not a for a vote. It's just a, an opportunity to have a discussion. One thing we've been talking about a lot with the fire department is the need to have uh admin support versus, you know, going right into having a paid chief or anything like that, they need in an admin support. So we've been um kicking around the idea of creating a physician that would work under emergency management with Tom Gallagher, and would do all the admin support for the departments with, you know, respect to all the first two stuff that you got to put in, you know, tracking the medicals, tracking uh equipment, and all kinds of other things you do that you need to like standardize the department. There'll be an opportunity to help um Tommy out as well on some of that. So it was an opportunity to kind of bring up you guys and start talking about it. Chief, you guys want to weigh in from from your need perspective? Because we're not voting tonight, but this is the only way we can talk as a board, you know, is is that's actually here.
I think from prior meetings, uh, it's like, uh, it's been stated very clearly, um, especially excessive discussions in the fire condition. Um, from private treatment room too, that he's been after this for fifteen years. Um, I can just tell you this afternoon, while we were working on fire reports, uh, a couple items came up that um will require us, when we have reports that may need some type of tweaking or whatever, the amount of time it's going to take to put those in now, you have to meet the person, to develop software, make changes to get these things in on a case-by-case basis, and that just added probably three or four hours this afternoon to the reports. You know, it's got to stop somewhere, all right, you know, uh, I did these statistics, and, you know, I'm a statistician guy. Um, and I said at the end of uh February, when I did the stats, that if we continue on this year, it will do a hundred sixty-one more fire calls downtown, what we did last year, at the end of March, it dropped to a hundred thirty-one more calls. I just did it Friday, it's back up to a hundred forty-five more calls. So when you start adding in all these additional fire reports and all the the tweaks that we have to make to make it compatible with the new software program, and it's just one small aspect there. But uh additional help in writing uh uh reports that are just required, notably by the local fire marshal, plus by the state. Um, and I'm sure Tom has already said it, the change in the headfirst program, uh, July first, um, which I know this is, this is a lot more administrative type support. And then just the general across the board, um, type of secret career work that needs to get done each and every day. Um, I've had it, all right? Um, I did my reports today, I go to eighty-one percent of the fire calls, just now, right? And that's what I should be doing, but then I have to go back and type and write new boards and all that other stuff. Just don't have anybody to do that.
So you're talking about reports, chief? I mean, the the reports are kind of the first, I know there's a lot of other things.
Yeah.
Could you, could you both put together kind of a list of the administrative things that you do?
Absolutely.
That you would want, quick.
Well, what is, one issue that I have, what is, if it's administrative, you know, helping us, is is this something that would be uh eight, nine, or eight to four o'clock job, you know, like.
It's going to be, it's going to be a full-time employee working with you guys and Tom and.
It doesn't really, it doesn't really help me, I work, you know, I, my full-time job, I'm not trying to meet this person or to to do anything. And and I'm not saying anything bad about.
Yeah.
Anything, all of our officers in Stony Hill, when we're done with a call, they do their report right there, there is no, you know, letting it sit or 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 any of that.
Right.
Everybody has to do their own own thing. And it, it moves it along, so there's not, you know, I don't have to sit there, and I don't know what Mr. Kelsey does it, but does them at the end and and inputs all that.
Well, the reports, first time I've heard about the reports.
Well, and there's other things, though, you know, that we have to do, the billing, I said, I said, I'm at my table, I do my, do all the bills, and my wife sits there and says, you want to do our bills too, and I say, no, I got it.
But by by reports, though, is this just a simple CAD report? Where, where, where it's basically, this was an automatic alarm, this is what units responded. So really, it's something where if you had a laptop, or however you guys, in the police cars, we had it in the car, where we could just punch it in really quick.
And so do we, right? We have a rating.
So it's just, so, so the reports are really just a simple CAD entry.
No, that's not true. It's not true, all right?
Tell me what, tell me what's so difficult about, don't speak to me that way. Don't tell me what we're going to get straight in a meeting. Be respectful, like I'm respectful to you.
Extremely respectful.
Okay, no.
Like you, I don't get dying for this job.
Okay.
Right? Neither one of us do.
Actually, I get five thousand, I don't, I want to be on record.
That's good.
Okay.
Zero, okay.
Which you volunteered for, you ran for chief.
A hundred percent, I volunteered for, I raised my hand and volunteered to do it. Listen, I have a lot of reports to do, we do more calls than they do. We have a lot of modifications that we make in our reports, but it's not just reports. We do truck reports every time we get back on a fire call. We sit on on the computer in the fire truck, and we do truck reports. Anything that needs to be done, any, any equipment changes, any breakdowns, we do that, fuel added, uh, all that kind of stuff. But what we also do is, we do very complete reports, um, and I know you've been in the same C I M. I've sat in courtrooms because of reports that I've done in the past, in my fifty-five years as a firefighter, twenty-seven and a half years as a career firefighter, like you, you know what that's about. It's tough, and if you don't do that report correctly, then any, you're really putting your, your personal reputation and your personal finances on the line. I don't want to do that, all right? I don't want any of my guys to do that either, all right? As I said, we're all volunteers, but there's a lot of other things that come in. People request uh uh appearances at different public events, um, different types of uh things that come in where we have to uh write additional letters to respond to people's inquiries about what goes on within the fire department. Um, any additional in-house reports that we have within the corporation itself. Um, you know, we we have a big organization, we did two thousand two hundred fifty calls downtown last year. Donnie did seventeen hundred in Stony Hill, that's four thousand calls a year, that's a call every other hour. It necessitates a lot of paperwork, that's all I'm saying here, all right?
So the the one, the one benefit towards having this would be the tracking of the physicals, the report in, um, I have one other thing that I have not for that long. That's okay. Oh, any kind of quotes that we need to do in the fire service, instead of, you know, that eliminates that. There is a benefit behind it, I don't think that, in my personal opinion, and I don't want to step out of, you know, my wheelhouse, I don't think it needs to be a full-time.
Okay.
Position by any means.
And that's where, that's where I was trying to go with.
And number one, there's no way that I can meet somebody during this, you know, I take, I leave this, I hate to say it here, but I leave the city to go to any fire call that I can.
So your thought is if there's a part-time person, then you you can manage somebody like that better?
And we can manage your time, like, say, hey, can you come up to Stony Hill on Monday night for, you know, two hours or whatever, if you have, you know, if you can get somebody that's flexible to do, you know, our Monday night, or even a Wednesday, or whatever night, you know, where we can meet them after hours, go over all this, and then
To do, you know, our Monday night or even a Wednesday or whatever night, you know, where we can meet them after hours, go over all this and then. They work, you know, a couple hours at Stony Hill, a couple hours down in Bethel. I think that would be an asset to 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 us, but to get a full time person, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, well, the the idea is that, listen, the truth is, we're we're getting closer every year to a paid department. And and you guys keep talking about the admin support and try, we're not tracking physicals adequately. We're not, we're not tracking equipment adequately, right? You don't have any backup doing all their stuff and you guys keep saying that. That you you need the help, and now you want what? A part time person that could be there in the evenings.
Uh, I think a part time person is is more beneficial for us right now.
Okay.
Than, and I don't mean to speak.
So, no, that's fine. So what I what I would like is just what we kind of talked about. If you can give me a list of things that need to be done. And and by the way, a lot of the reporting, this first I heard reporting, I've talked to Tommy Gallagher a lot about it, but the reporting you should done by the officers when you're. Like at the, at our death for a fire, or whatever, you're there, you're doing all the reports. You're not having an admin go fill out the reports per se, but if that's what you need, just give us an idea of what it is, cuz we've been kicking this around for a while. And that's the main goal is I wanna find out what it is you actually need.
But you wouldn't want an admin to fill out your report. You were there, they're not. It's a CAD report.
Yeah.
I understand an admin to help you with your budget presentations. I understand an admin to write correspondence to people. I have no issue with that. I understand an admin to help with other clerical things, whether it's ordering supplies for you guys, keeping track of your budget. Totally understandable. Just the CAD aspect, I wouldn't feel comfortable with an admin doing that because you were on the call. That would be like me. You know, when I was a policeman telling the administrator, administrative assistant, hey, uh, I responded to alarm last night, fill out my. My 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 CAD report. Go to dispatch, see what times I was there from. You know, so that's all I'm saying. And, you know, I I that's where I was going with, I think in the beginning, maybe start part time. And we see what the workload is for the person. And if it, we determine that there's enough workload where it has to go full time, that has to go full time, you know, especially, you know, depending on what. Tommy's using them for in the town hall aspect. But, you know, you you would have my support in a part time position. You know, I don't know if you're gonna get my support right off the bat with full time until I say exactly what they're doing and what we can handle.
And and part of that too is is getting a better handle on what Tommy would do too.
Of course. Because he's got a lot of, you know, I know he's got a lot of fire inspections and a lot of stuff that he has to do and.
And there's no backup.
There's, no, I get it. You know, I'm sure, I'm sure it would be very helpful for Tommy sending out letters and sending out the inspection reports and all that, typing all that. Stuff up.
So if you guys could give us some ideas of what it would, like tracking medical and all this stuff.
I can give you an example. When I was chief of another department, what we did. You say budget and foreign administrative personnel person here. But what we did is in the first six months of the year, we made that a part time position. And they they analyzed it at the end of the first six months to see if there was adequate time being allocated. And of course, at that particular time, you realized how much work was going on. Uh, they they necessitated it. Um, I I really like to get into detail about the sole employer aspect of this, which is where I'm going to report in. But I just not an appropriate venue for that tonight. And I will make that part of my report sheet, all right? And I think that will give you a little bit more perspective. Ryan, I just wanna say, I hope you're not, I just got hot on this thing, cuz I don't have any more hours in a day. I really don't.
Water under the bridge.
I don't want to feel that way. You're, only mind, we've been together for years. I don't wanna see any issues here.
No issues.
You okay with that?
I'm good.
All right, so am I.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, consideration of appointment of an attorney for a property tax appeal. Um, Mel, you mean to go into what the appeals matter, just to point the.
Yeah, really, it's a question about the tax appeal of some unique situation, longstanding issues, and the tax assessors reached a point where she needs. Some support. So this um attorney is Owen Weaver, he's Zabel Schellenberg P L L C. He acts as special counsel for us on other tax appeal matters. And he's going to take this on under the same terms and conditions as his prior engagement letter, which is an acceptable fee. Um, so and we're comfortable with him, so our recommendation is to sign this to him.
Okay, so I move that we appoint Owen Weaver of Zabel and Schellenberg P L L C for a tax appeal for one hundred five hundred. Any further discussion? Is that motion in order, Mel? It sounds like it is. So then I'll try your minds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up, um, so I did put on here a discussion of sale seventy four South Street. Um, really, we can, we can table this. It just, it just has come up, the packet has just come out, the Smithland property is up for sale. Um, you know.
Yes.
Uh, I think, I think three million, but they'll go less. We don't, but there's a bunch of people lining up for it. The truth is, I don't think we have the time. Um, I'm approached all the time about doing a community. Uh, center of some kind. Um, I've had discussions with the Y M C A of Hartford and Waterbury. I don't know that we can move quickly enough, even if we wanted to do this.
It was a great place.
Oh, it's awesome. I love that place.
And I I don't wanna see what's going on in other parts.
Yeah. I mean, I I I'm sure somebody's gonna go grab it. You just don't know who. I'm hoping it's not, you know, an eight thirty G development. Especially with the the housing bill that just was signed by the governor today. Um, but anyway, I'll I'll find out more information as we go. I'm gonna have a meeting next week with the uh former chair of the Waterbury Y. Current chair, he's current chair now of Greater Hartford, and the interim chair of Waterbury, who's technically the chair in our area right now. And, you know, just kind of continue the conversation. If we ever did wanna try it, I am no way in favor of going alone. It, you know, we'd have to have some sort of private partner, public partnership with a Y M C A or somebody like that.
They said properties owned us.
Uh. I think it's T O D. Village Village, what was Village Center zoning, not T O D, but.
Part of them were in the T O D and those weren't allowed to be. So those were designated commercial, I thought.
Yeah, well, right now, though, a lot of these, these things coming from Hartford are allowing us to have right conversion of commercial. I mean, it's awful, but I I haven't even had a chance to really unpack it. I've got a Westcon meeting on Thursday. And we're gonna go through um what they eventually came through, what the governor signed, I believe, today. But uh, it's pretty, pretty ominous. We'll get through it just as we do. Anyway, I I just wanna put on my radar, if it's something we're talking about, I will go through the economic development, have a meeting with that Y. Just if we we see something come open at work someday, I'd like everybody to be open to it if we're not just doing it on the taxpayer's side. So that was it. I just wanna, any thoughts from you guys with the the sale or anything going on with it?
Maybe a chance to see it turned into apartments.
And Elizabeth, Janice Christiane has also approached me. She, what, is she still here?
Yes.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons Janice approached me too was the idea of like if we do something else with it, so it wouldn't be parking, et cetera. Janice, you're there. Do you wanna make any comments on what you know?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, Dan, I think that property is zoned industrial. So that uh that would limit, you know, eight thirty G or some of the things that could go on there. Um, you know, I think my suggestion was, you know, if it wasn't something that we would purchase, maybe we can do some sort of agreement with whoever purchases it. To provide um parking in that area. Um, based on our parking study, that's kind of the area that gets uh the most use. Um, so we really could use some parking in that area. So if there was an opportunity to work with whoever purchases it, that would be um. You know, that would be my recommendation.
Janice, what did it sell for the last time?
I think it was on the market for one point eight.
You don't know what it ended up selling for?
It didn't sell.
It did, yeah, it did. It didn't sell, no.
It it looks like the guy who had it.
What, what did JP Morgan pay for, you know?
They did, and I don't think, well, we don't know, actually.
Yeah, I I don't, yeah.
Guy who had it is Trio Funds, now works for JP Morgan. So I don't know, like.
Did it get foreclosed on or does he still own it?
He doesn't own it. JP Morgan owns this, my understanding.
Yeah, I I haven't seen, I haven't seen a transfer of it, a property transfer, so I'm not exactly sure. Once it went on the market the last time, what happened.
It it's still on the land records for us as Trio. But JP, but he's he's with JP Morgan now, so I don't know.
And the reason it didn't sell is because there was an eighteen year lease existing. So that property was tied up, and now Smithfield's out of business, that's why it's available.
Right. Right. Um, so if any else changes, I mean, you guys have any other thoughts? Um.
Uh, maybe approach the owners if he's feeling philanthropic and wants to. I mean, there are tax benefits to selling to the town and, you know. I mean, JP Morgan does business, it's not the Delta.
I actually don't know if JP Morgan's around. Chase is here, I mean, that's somebody.
That's JP Morgan, JP Morgan Chase. I mean, you never know, I think, that size.
Well, the actual, the actual paperwork or the packet for the sale just came on the market today.
So it was three million.
I think, Janice, did you see?
Yeah, it was three million. They're also looking to lease it for two fifty a month.
Yeah.
Two hundred, two hundred fifty.
I talked to our realtor.
Two fifty for the year. It was twenty thousand when they were.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Yep, yep.
Our realtor seemed to think there was some movement. Um, okay. That was it. Any other further discussion? I just put it on my radar. Uh, finally, uh, consideration appointments for vacancy board commissions. Uh, we have one email in front of us. Um, this is for the in the wetness commission. If you recall, uh, when Paul and Frodo resigned, we had not filled that position yet. So we have uh two folks who are interested in the board. First off, for Paul's position, Terry Rotella is interested. Um, that Terry would have to run in the fall. And uh, we're we're expecting a resignation letter from Laura Ferguson, who's not been coming to the meetings. And we have a gentleman by the name of Nicholas Sacamani. Both those are Republican positions, um, and they'll be running again this November. So with that, um, I make a motion to appoint Terry Rotella to the vacancy previously held by Paul and Proton. Any uh further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And next up, I move that we appoint Nicholas Sacamani. To fill this seat pending submission of a resignation letter by Laura Ferguson. A second?
Uh, second, it's legal.
I believe it is. If we're we're, they play contention on getting the actual letter, it's on the way.
Okay.
It's coming.
It's coming. Yeah, and and the reason we're moving quickly, obviously, because they can't meet. They have had some real challenges, so.
So the letter was coming from?
From Laura Ferguson to the town clerk.
Okay.
Uh, it will have a wet signature. And uh, it might come to be, you know, delivered to the town clerk, but it's imminent. So obviously, we, until we have that letter, it's it's pending for resignation is the way we're making the motion. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Without a prior minds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, I will just put it out there, we still have um. Two positions on the ethics commission. I'm waiting back from the uh Democrat town chairs or chairman of vacancies committee on one of them. And um, I'm waiting back for the Republicans on the other self. Probably the next one will hopefully come up. With that, that's it. Any further business coming for the board?
Motion. Second.
All in favor, aye. Miss Kaniger, eight point two. Thanks, everybody.